I mean, the little kids must be thinking. Um, it's after six by that clock and I I didn't hear anybody or no one responded to me saying they were not coming, but that doesn't mean.
Who are we missing over there?
Yeah, who's that?
I'm expecting a Daisy flag.
And Matt Law.
Well, I think we might as well.
I think I sent it out Gmail. Yeah, I just didn't get any reply from anybody either way, except Jamie and Amanda said they'd be here. So, okay, well, the reason that we called this meeting is to refine our survey questionnaire that we're going to mail out to all of the households in Hooper City. Do you guys have a paper copy of?
I wish I could do that. I usually print out stuff.
We can make copies.
Okay, well, I've got some, Shauna, I kept a few. I mean, I made a few. Amanda, I know she loves paper.
It didn't change since the first time. That's around.
Okay, so that's the one that.
Oh, I thought you meant the what she sent over that committee.
That's the one that was at front sent over. I might have a couple of these as well.
Yeah, he lost the one that.
Oh, no, I only have one copy of those. I wanted, I wanted you to have the first set that went out.
Here's a copy of the community engagement plan.
Uh, you have Jane. I don't think I have yours.
She has a copy of them. I didn't bring copies with me.
Okay.
I just took some off some planning documents.
Can I have you?
We want to be sure.
I believe this is what.
Please.
I think so.
I can give you a little background on what's, what's happening. And each of you, did you each get in your email this Hooper City Community Engagement Plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and Shauna was just passing out copies of it. This is from Wasatch Front. And so, but also, oh, boy, we're going down circles. Also, I would like you to be, to look at the website that we have. It's called planhooper.wedley, W-E-E-B-L-E-Y. Sorry, L-Y. Weeblee, W-E-B-L-Y dot com. They have put up a pretty nice website right now. It's.
Okay, and is it functional? Because I almost said that. I said that in the city council meeting. And then they're like, oh.
Has anybody reviewed it yet? So I think we should be putting the link out until we've had a chance to look at it.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. We're going in that direction tonight, okay? So, we people in the advisory committee, I want you to go to that planhooper.wedley.com, read through it, because I talked with Maddie Hatterling, who is, and Megan Townsend today, and kind of went through it paragraph by paragraph and said, made a few changes. Because number one, they had dates in there that was saying, you know, our kickoff meeting was October 3rd.
My questionnaire though, right, so is this website up to date that anybody can go in and look at?
I don't know right now on the phone.
Because that's what I thought we were going to all review before they really put it online.
Well, it's, it's there. If anybody knows the, knows the web address, they can get to it. But we haven't advertised the web address yet. You know what I mean? So it's there, just like Sheldon. I just gave him the address, so he went to it. Thank you.
And we should log on in an email.
I think it came in someone's email when she listed what the site would be.
Okay.
Megan did.
Okay. These are the, these were Jamie's original. Yeah, so we've got two documents here, the small print and the large print. So back to your question, Dale. The planhooper.wedley.com is a valid website. We're not really publicly advertising it yet, but it's, it's, there's nothing there that.
That can be changed once this group has a chance.
Right, and it can be changed.
So here's one thing to, you know, you can go into it to select to be a post for meetings or whatever, right? Your Living One chat that says, which city council district you live in. I live in six, it won't go to five.
Okay.
Yeah, there were some things I noticed too. That's why I was concerned. Because she said, go ahead and send it out to the, post it on social media. And I was like, no, we haven't looked at it yet.
No, and.
Those people in six don't matter anymore.
Yeah, so in this community engagement general plan, I think there's kind of towards the back, there's a calendar that we kind of modified today. So, October 28th is when we want to send out survey number one, which is the questions that we're doing here. And that's a week from today, okay? So we can modify these or refine these questions tonight and get that finalized. We'll send, send them to Megan or to Maddie. And they will put them online, but then they're also, we're also going to print them and put them in the mail. As soon as I can get the permission from the mayor to expend that money.
Sorry, how do you prevent somebody from sending in a mailed one and answering online?
Well, we thought about that, and do you think it would happen enough to skew the data?
Yeah, it could.
You think, really? If I, if, if your household gave two answers or three answers instead of two?
Part of the thing that I was hoping is if we kind of had an idea where these were coming from.
Right.
Then, you know, you might have a totally different answer. If you say, you know, is the growth in Hooper out of control? Is it how it should be? West Hooper might say it's out of control. East Hooper might say, I think it's fine, continue how it's going. Or, and I think it's important when we make the plan that we know what each area kind of wants, so that maybe when we put those zones in place, we're trying to be considerate of what the different people want. I just think it would be helpful if we kind of knew who.
If there's a council person that's in control, then to know what their district is.
Yeah, what they want, yeah.
I've been wondering, I don't know if this would be feasible. I did ask Megan about it. And I know it would take a little bit more work, but I feel like we would get such a good response if we were able to go door to door. And I know it's COVID, but we wouldn't have to be, I mean, we could stand outside farther than six feet apart if we had a basic survey where, and we just kept track of maybe each of us in our own district, or like I know my family would help to cover whatever area, so that then we knew for sure. We have everybody's input. Because I just think when things come in the mail, a lot of times, I am guilty of this, they just get tossed aside. And for some of those people that don't have access to like the internet or things like that, or aren't checking regularly, I just don't want to lose, I would like to get everybody's input that we possibly can.
In fact, that was my number one thing about my last meeting, is to get the most response possible. How do we get the very most response from people? That's, if, if we only get 10% response, really, what, what good is our survey then? If we only get 50%, what good is it then?
I think it would be great if we could get that.
You what?
Well, I just said, I think it would be great if we could get the majority of Hooper. So then everybody, when they complain, we can be like, hey, you said, this is what you wanted to do.
So, okay. And I agree, we want to find a way to get the most response. But I think what we first want to do is, the purpose of our meeting tonight is to refine what questions are going to be asked, to refine the survey. So that we've, because we've got like three documents. And the one that that Wasatch Front put together is pretty good, but I think we want to maybe incorporate some different things into it. So do you think we can just, everybody look at the Hooper? It's the one in the small type?
Hooper General Plan Survey.
Yeah, Hooper General Plan Survey.
It's like whole pages?
Yeah.
I think that's pretty long.
I agree.
Way long, and that.
Okay.
Also, I think questions where they have to write, like, what are your favorite thing about Hooper? That's, that's pretty, I don't open any questions like that. I don't think that's good.
I agree with you. I think if we could have something that was just very simple and short, just to gauge what it is like, do you think that, you know, there's, how do you feel about a Main Street here? Or just simple so that we can get, and then from there maybe we can do a little bit more complex the next time that we.
So we're sending out a second survey.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go. We can do more than one.
So that's why I thought this first survey ought to be broad. And then we can take it in and narrow it down and focus it based on responses that we get. I don't mind your idea, Amanda, of going door to door, but I still want to, I want to be able to say in any planning commission meeting that comes in front of us, or any citizen that comes to us and says, I never knew about this, that we can say, we mailed to every household in Hooper. Now, whether you weren't home when we knocked on your door, or whether you never got on the internet, we mailed to every household in Hooper. If you're not responsible enough to open your mail, I can't control that.
I've been wondering if we did the door to door thing, like, if we had a list of everybody in Hooper, so that when we go, we can say, okay, we made contact with this person, this is their answers, or we left it on their door. That way, if they contact us, we do have something saying, we did leave a survey with you, but we have a way to trace where those are, where it's coming from.
How does the census do it? Because obviously, if you don't do it, they can knock on your door.
I was going to say, you can take a page from like how the census do it. And this year, the census is the first year they've done it online. So I think what you can do is you can do your survey online if you want to. You can even mail out postcards saying, hey, go to this website, so learn what the census did. Mail those out separately to everybody saying, go online and do that. And then we can make sure that maybe perhaps we can add like an address question into this survey. And then we can quantify that data as it pulls in. And maybe we can, we can focus on pockets that didn't respond. And those might be pockets in the rural end, maybe where we have residents who don't access internet or things like that. But you can also, you know, you can get that initial survey back, and then maybe you can start going door to door when you don't have a response to looking for it. But we can coordinate the release of the survey with a mass mailer and see who we give to.
I love the idea of if they, you know, they send it out and they go to an online theme where they put in their address so that we can connect it. And then if we're able to track that, so that we know who hasn't put it in yet.
Well, and then you can track that with the paper copies for different cuts.
Right.
So if there's a way to put the names in.
And, and, well, I thought, I thought we would maybe, maybe at the end of the survey incentivize it by saying, providing your name and address, we'll entry you automatically in a drawing for a Hooper tomato. Or something like that.
Something, I feel like we have to, I think we have to know, there has to be a name. Otherwise, I do think that there could be, I mean, you hate to think that, but I think there could be some that are turned in maybe for people that aren't outside or aren't in this area, or, I don't know. And the other thing I was going to say, so if we did this idea where you go online with it, can that also be with the first survey that goes out? We're not talking about like sending the first one out, and then the ones that we don't hit with that, then the second survey going to the people?
No, the, the survey that we mail is identical to the survey online, the first time around, and the second time too. Both times.
Door to door, with the contact we personally would.
Yeah, so then if we're not happy with the percentage of response we get, and we feel like we want to go knocking doors, it'll be with exactly the same questions.
That's good. I think that would be good. The only other thing I noticed too, kind of goes along with what Cindy was saying, that I just think people are so busy that if we give them something too broad right now, they're not going to be as likely to do it. Like, what's the, what's the statistics or the data on? If you try to type in a website and it takes longer than two seconds to come up, you're on to the next theme. Like, I just think people are so busy that I don't know if they'll sit down and fill out something that's like five pages long versus checking a box if we.
Well.
I think the statistics on surveys is like three minutes, just less than three minutes to complete the survey.
Okay.
And even if you do go door to door, you've got to set a time limit on that.
Yeah.
I will take, I'll, I'll take five minutes of your time.
Yeah.
And boom, 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 yes, those questions.
Yep.
So that's got to be pretty.
Because that's what I ask people. If they call me and they're like, we're going to do a little survey or something, and I say, how long is this going to take? And if it's like five minutes, okay, maybe, I'm okay with that. But if you want 10 or 15, I don't have it.
How does a door to door survey go if someone has like no specifications? Does that not matter?
Yeah, I was going to say, like, when, if, or when you want to go door to door, we should coordinate that with a campaign outreach to let people know, like, you know, hey, how you turning your survey? If you have not, expect maybe an off of the door for us to get your input.
Yes, and if you're not comfortable because of COVID, we'll leave the survey there. So that you can respond to it then.
And, and those are things that we can do easily with postcards or, you know, quick little social media information tidbits. It's just, it's hard, because if you are going door to door, most likely that's somebody who didn't get that information from a website or from Facebook. So we're going to want to kind of coordinate, you know, if you want like a postcard sent out, you know, like happy with your survey, if not, you know, we'll say hi, kind of a thing.
I think that's great if you.
Thank you, Brian, involved youth going door to door.
Yeah, what about the youth council?
Yeah, let them do a civic responsibility. Or someone that's doing a civics class in high school or whatever. I don't, I don't know.
Well, the youth council probably wouldn't mind being.
Yeah, that would be something you could coordinate with the two high schools. The other sort of teachers or history teachers or something. My wife, she's Lisa, right?
Okay, can we just start with question number one?
Okay, we don't want to sidetrack you again, right?
You're doing a good job.
We make the decision on mechanics of this survey.
So mail in first, then we'll go up to.
It'll be mail and web, mail and web at the same time. As soon as it's released, and then we'll collate and see what kind of percentage we're getting of responses. We need to decide at that point in time, you know, is 65% enough? That's the majority of people, or is, do we want a 90% response? You know, we'll have to just decide. And then if, if we feel like we're getting insufficient response, then we'll do a door to door campaign and, and follow up with a postcard that will say, we haven't, if, if you haven't responded to the survey, you may get a knock on the door, kind of thing. But we need to know which doors to knock on.
I think they could put on the top of this, like, you can answer this on paper, by email.
Right.
Or by, on web, you know, whatever.
Okay, so, so what I envisioned, and what I talked with Was, the regional council today, was that we would send out, in a mailing, there would be three documents. One is like a flyer, a cover letter, that will give the website, what we're trying to do, you know, kind of an introductory thing. Then the second one would be the survey questions. And the third one, I want to include a copy of the resolution that was just passed, so that all of our citizens are aware of the resolution, why we're doing, what we're doing, and what we intend to accomplish when we're done. So I think people feel like that's important. I think it's important that everybody know, at every, you know, every household can say, okay, I was told that, that we're trying, that they're trying to, for lack of a better word, slow down the growth for a period of time, you know? I just think it's good to have people, and they may receive that and say, oh, this is great. Somebody's doing something, or I don't care, you know? They're going to look at it one way or the other, but I still think it's good to have it be informed. And I, I recognize that I'm asking for some expenses. And Shauna, in reply to your answer for Wasatch Front's scope of work, no, it does not include mailers. Something, they'll, they'll design them.
Sure.
But we have to print them and mail them.
And that makes sense.
So, okay. So I think the initial, the first paragraph, number one, Hooper General Plan is the process of updating our general plan that is designed to guide the vision, growth, safety, and welfare of the present and future citizens of our city. Everybody okay with that one? Can we leave it in? That's just a statement. Are we good? Anybody want it out? Okay. So then the second one is, what are we doing? The planning commission and city council are asking the residents of our city for their feedback during this process. Please take a few minutes to complete this survey, return it to the city offices as soon as possible. We truly want and need your input. Okay. We should also add there that this survey can, can be completed online, okay?
And it's got that right there too.
For more information and to complete the survey online, please visit planhooper. Okay, perfect.
Maybe bold, bold website.
Bold that?
Yeah.
Planhooperwedley.com. Actually, I just missed it myself, so there we go. I only read the paragraph, so we'll put that in bold. Okay, question number one, what is your favorite thing about Hooper? Do we want to leave it in or take it out?
I'd say at this point, I would prefer to see just something where they click a box and not have any kind of narrative on there. I just think it's, they're going to be less likely to respond about this.
How are, like, how have they talked to us about how we kind of measure those answers? Like, what, I mean, that's just, you're going to get people just either given like one word, or you're going to get people given like an entire paragraph of everything they love. So that's really hard to measure in a survey.
Right, but it.
You've all heard the comment, you know, getting off in the weeds.
Yep.
It's sometimes open ended statements, we, we're off in the weeds, because we don't know.
And leave things up to interpretation. I mean, anytime you're looking at written, I have it in text all the time. You see one thing, and I see another thing, and.
I would like the next two questions, one and two.
I would too.
Well, first of all, if you just put like the open space, the kind, the people, I don't know, you could put.
You could put choices on there.
For choices, they'd be limited to that, but you could if you wanted. Well, one thing I like, I think, is you were saying one of those meetings before, like, people come up and talk like, say, whatever thing to you, like, why you moved to Hooper, whatever. I thought it'd be good for the last question, as long as, like, some people, some, some surveys don't capture anything unless they did like submit at the end. Some surveys will capture, I don't know if it's survey or if you want to have it or not, but.
I think these are all going to be manually read by us as a committee.
The survey completely, sometimes people click out of it before hitting submit at the end. You get none of that information. Even if they filled out.
Right.
And that for some of that information.
Also, if you, I think if you start off with the click in a box theme.
Yeah, people move through a lot quicker.
They'll be like, oh, this isn't going to take too long. And then at the end, if you wanted to have one question that said, is there any suggestions? Or something like that, just something basic where they could put more if they wanted to.
So in another question, a group of questions that I submitted for consideration, one of them was, please describe your vision for Hooper.
Yeah, that's way too long, I think. I think that would, that fits in, in my opinion, that fits in with these.
What's your favorite thing about Hooper? So are you, are you feeling like we should not have any essay question, essay questions that require an answer?
Maybe one at the end.
I think, and I agree with that, one at the end. If I go through a survey and they say at the end, if I want to know something about, I will, they don't, I just do it. So, and that's probably.
And to Mary's point, these are all very valid questions about how people build Hooper. And I think it's important to maybe set these questions aside and use those as focus group.
Yes.
Really hard there where you can kind of control what the information you're getting.
So, so you think putting an essay question like, what's your favorite thing about Hooper at the end of this survey would be a good idea?
I think it would more just be like a comment box.
A comment box.
If you have any suggestions or.
Okay, so make it just as a comment.
And it would go at the end.
And what, what did you say your question was? It's kind of sounded like.
I just said, please describe your vision of Hooper.
Yeah, that would get me a lot of time.
That, I mean, I, so I sent out just those five questions, including that one, to the people that I have talked to a little bit about gathering information with the zoning and everything. I mean, I've gotten pages of, like, they've typed long responses and stuff. But I don't think with this, because those people I talked to directly about input and possibly serving on the focus group for the zoning and land use.
Well, the thing too, that I have to do everything on my phone, right? So if I start a comment box and I have three lines I can see, and then that starts disappearing, and I can't see stuff, it gets really, you know, you just kind of get.
And that's, you know, and I recognize that we've got a broad demographic here in, in Hooper, and we're going to have our 18 to 45, 50-year-olds that are probably going to use this. Okay, but then you've got that more senior area that may or may not use this, and then some that will definitely only use this. And that's why we wanted to both mail and have electronic, but keep it compatible so it works for either one. So, okay, so number one, we're just going to make it as a comment box at the end, right? We're good with that? Okay, what about number two? Should we leave it in or take it out?
Take it out. I think it should just be a generic comment or suggestions at the back for the end.
Okay, number three, what would you like to see more of in Hooper? Do you want to keep that question as a checkbox answer?
Some of those I didn't feel like applied, well, mainly the employment opportunities. I don't see, I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see that fitting our community.
It doesn't really fit our.
Well, I think everyone, from, from my experience on the planning commission and in the city council wants there to be businesses in Hooper.
Yes.
And that, and I think that's about, I think that's about the question.
Because if we don't have some commercial, obviously, we're not going to have employment opportunities.
Would you say employment opportunities, or would you say more businesses or something? Because I feel like the two.
I would like employment opportunities, is where you want to be able to go and apply for a job in Hooper.
And I just.
Is that, I just don't know who, what, what kind of business would we have that would employ and one of all is want to have our job in Hooper.
That's what I just, why I wasn't sure, because to me, businesses, unemployment opportunities are different.
Businesses or something like that, I don't know.
But then at the bottom, there's other, please comment below. So I, I think they're all good, and if they have something they want to add, they can add it right there.
I know that I want to see none and more or less of it.
On the other, can you limit that to like 50 characters or something? Because then again, they're going to.
Yes.
Just other, just say, please limit to.
Well, I think, are you talking the bottom one?
What we mean, what we mean by.
But I think they would.
See, again, I'm feeling like I'm one that's off in the weeds. What do we mean by employment opportunities? What do we mean by that?
Well, I think if, maybe someone's like, say, we bring in a manufacturing facility, I don't know. I mean, that's the only thing I.
Well, if they bring in places to eat, obviously, results in employment opportunities. If we bring in a, a little Main Street.
Have a job, I'd like them to have a job at Hooper versus for them to, or else somewhere else to find that.
So maybe it's, maybe we should say employment opportunities slash.
Businesses or whatever.
Small commercial development.
Yeah, see, I think maybe small commercial development would encompass.
So then put that, put that as a separate one. Because I don't, I think if employment opportunities backslash small businesses, those are two different.
Right, so we wouldn't be able to determine which one were they talking about.
Yeah, so add that on.
So make another checkbox that says. Minor commercial development, small.
Did you say small businesses? Is that what you said?
Well, actually, if you look though, we do have a lot of small businesses.
We do, but they're one or two, they're sole proprietorship.
We have a lot of businesses in Hooper.
So I guess you would have to say.
Several hundred. They're just working out of their homes. No, we've got a lot of businesses here, but for someone to have a separate brick and mortar building.
Maybe just put commercial employment opportunities, that'd kill both of them.
Or commercial development.
Well, and then on the next question, there is an option for, should Hooper have a commercial area dedicated to retail and office space? So that could be why they're differentiating between employment opportunities and then commercial retail space on floor. So you could omit employment opportunities if you wanted to.
On three, just leave it out.
If you want to do that, or I think that's where the separation is coming from is, do you want to work where you live?
I agree.
And then, and then the question four is, do you want to see small commercial space?
I agree, because if you put employment opportunities, I mean, that could mean, like, some people, there's people that are like, bring a Walmart down here, and there's other people that are, I just think, I like taking that off of.
So let's just take it out completely, taking out employment opportunities out of number three completely.
Yeah.
Okay. Number four, how strongly do you agree with the following statements regarding land use? Options will be listed. Options will be listed from strongly agree to disagree, but.
I think that's not explained very well as to how you have to do that.
So, I mean, you would want to have a one, two, three, four, or five, with one being the strongest and five being the weakest.
Sounds like that's what they're planning on doing, maybe they just didn't do it.
But they haven't explained that very well, so. How strongly do you agree with the following statements regarding land use?
And I hate those where you have to write your one, two, people.
I know.
Sometimes I have one, one, one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and you could just have them do like a strongly agree, you could just have them get to two on each of them, I don't know.
Oh, strongly agree or strongly disagree, yeah.
Strongly agree, strongly disagree, or like, like.
Neutral.
Disagree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's easier to tally up than if you've got, well, there, there are four and there are three, so.
So, so let's, let's take out that statement that's in parentheses, that says options will be listed from strongly agree to strongly disagree. And in the checkboxes, we'll either have an agree box or a disagree box.
Well, you could have three little boxes, strongly agrees.
Neutral.
Neutral or strongly disagree, they can check whichever one they agree with.
So three boxes.
Agree, neutral, or disagree, different.
Mm-hmm.
That's great.
And then take out that statement that's in parentheses, because that doesn't make sense. So there'd be three boxes.
That's a little easier to figure out.
Perfect. So what about the statements themselves? Park should serve as a center for meeting and community activity? What else are they for?
So we all strongly agree with that?
Well, I just think that that's a, it's a redundant question.
Common sense question?
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. The area at fifty-five hundred south and fifty-five west should be a walkable main street with outdoor dining and small shops? What do you feel about that statement? Wait, did we decide we should take number one off completely, park should serve as a center?
I think that's kind of a ban.
Is it okay in there?
I don't think it'll cause any problems to.
Okay, okay. Second item on the list.
I hope they got one right.
This is not a test.
Well, I think that the lineage is between like sports parks.
Recreation and.
You have soccer facilities, you have baseball facilities, and you have specific facilities for football. And so they wanna make sure that if we are doing a parks or parks are in our general plan, that they are just for social gatherings and things like that. How they're developed.
Okay, all right, that, but that puts a new, new light on it, I agree with that. Do we want to leave the second bullet box in? Talk about it.
You brought up, and they quite like.
A walkable main street, mm-hmm, okay.
It's a natural place, I love that.
Yeah, well, it's zoned that way already. The third item, should have a commercial area dedicated to retail and office space.
Yep, I'd leave that one in.
Because you wanna know if they agree or disagree, for sure. Provide more housing choices to include duplexes and townhomes, do you wanna know if they agree or disagree?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. And the Great Salt Lake Shoreline and Ogden Bay management area are important features of Hooper that should be preserved.
Yeah.
Agree or disagree? That's easy.
We don't have a choice. That is, that, we don't, we don't have a choice if we wanna lift the gates or not to keep Hooper from flooding out that way. We, we don't have a choice.
So, so should it even be in there?
My recommendation is.
Just Great Salt Lake Shoreline.
To what?
To omit that.
Omit it?
Only because we don't have any type of.
We have no control over it at all.
And you don't want to apply, you do.
Yeah, if you wanted to change or ask the question, say something like, would you like to see.
I agree.
Natural management areas in Hooper City. Those would be something that would be controlled by Hooper City, where these types of things, both Ogden Bay and the other shoreline trail, we just don't have any jurisdiction.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll take.
We can't even drive across the Great Salt Lake bed, the lake bed, to get to Fremont Island, can't.
I'm worried.
We don't, because you're gonna stop us for doing that.
I know, I know the one lady that, on our, on our tour, kinda asked about the access to it. And so maybe it's a feature that, I mean, I don't go down there, but if I had a reason to go down there, maybe there's, maybe educate people, maybe there's something you can do down there, I don't know.
Well.
I think what they're getting at is, it's a, it's an asset to the community, are we really utilizing that resource? Like, the community, do they know about it, and the things they can do down there, I don't know what you can do down there, train.
I, I see what you mean, because we took them down there and showed them.
Yeah, and I think she was asking, I'd say, how, how often do you access this? And hunters do for sure.
Right, but, but I agree with what they said, by putting that in there, it, it leads the reader to ponder the question, well, what can we do with that, you know?
I think you should leave something about Great Salt Lake in there for future, what we've talked about, because Hooper will be involved in, as that progressive body.
That's what you promised. Okay.
I have a question, so.
That's kind of.
Do you have something to include in the next one?
Just kidding.
The Great Salt Lake Shoreline.
I think you could just say, the.
Is an important feature of Hooper that should be preserved. Yeah, just.
I think it would just be that simple.
And, and just leave it in there as agree or disagree?
Well, the problem is, if it says no, that.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's a waste of, it's a waste of a question for looking to streamline or speed and stuff that's not repeating.
I just wondered if there was anything as far as, that we wanted to put in there as far as like historical sites or things like that, if that would fall under that same type of theme?
Well, let's, let's read on and see if there's other.
I didn't see it, but I may have missed it. And the other theme, I don't know if, is, do we need to bring up anything? I know it says including duplexes and townhomes, but like, we've talked about smaller lots as far as, you know, quarter acre lots, thirty acre lot, whatever, is that something we need to spell out, or is it enough, does that cover it?
I think, I think in this one right now, I, I think this initial one, just to see what their responses to like duplexes and townhomes.
Okay.
If they all strongly disagree, then that's gonna pretty well guide us in the direction that we know we, we wanna go.
I don't know that I would necessarily include, well, historic sites, I don't, I don't know if I would include it here, only because I know the RAMP committee is already working on, you know, trying to get a ramp for signs for other local historical sites, so I think it's already in play.
I just didn't know, is, and I, this is something I'm not educated in at all, but things that are technically historical sites, do we need to stay away from doing certain things around them so that we don't disturb that?
I don't know that we, not that we don't have any of them here, in Hooper, but I don't know, some of the sites that the locals consider, consider historical are not actually on the National Register for what would be considered a national historic site for us to preserve or for them to preserve in that manner. But then again, we don't necessarily even have any jurisdiction.
That's what I wondered.
Over those things, they tend to be private property or managed by another federal agency.
So Jamie, here's a question for you. I kinda thought in time, I understood from you, there are, some of these sites are known at this state level.
Yeah.
It's not like they just send the word out to everybody because they don't want people going out there and maybe messing it up, maybe even taking.
So we have a map layer, SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, has a map layer that they've mapped every known preservation site or historic site in the state. The map layer's not public, but we do know where they are. So chances are, you don't even know if they're within your community because it's not public information. But when you build or you get any type of permits, like from the state or things like that, you have to be like Cultural Resource Clearance or an ARC clearance. And at that time, that's when they come out and they tell you if there's resources on that site pursuant to that map layer that we use. So, I mean, it, they could be on Hooper City land, they could not be on Hooper City land, they could be on private property. They could be anywhere. So, I mean, we could look it up and tell you exactly how many are within Hooper City. So.
Well, it's, and while we're on this topic, where it says the Great Salt Lake Shoreline is an asset or an important feature of Hooper that should be preserved, if we change that last bullet box on question number four. Jamie submitted a question, or a suggested question, which says, which natural resources need the most attention in order to improve or maintain the quality of life in Hooper? And then it goes wetlands, open space, farmlands, parkland, lakes, soils, and other. So maybe we.
Could we make that a statement?
Maybe we should.
And then they can agree or disagree with that?
Yeah, like, do you agree that, yeah, you could, you could.
Because that kind of fits in there.
Yeah, or we could even omit that, that last box on number four and put that in there with the.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, make that a statement, and then agree or disagree.
Yeah.
So, number four then.
Did we agree or disagree on that? We agreed, right?
So how's it working again, Jamie?
Jamie's statement, right?
It's, that's what on this paper, that's the resource one.
So, for question number four, we're gonna have four bullet boxes. And they're gonna be agree or disagree, and it's the first three items under question number four. And we'll take out that last one at this point in time and move it somewhere else. Is that, do I understand that right?
Wait, sorry.
I don't think we're gonna move that last one because.
I think you could just take it out, because natural resources will cover everything in there.
Okay. So it's out, it's out of, it's out of question number four.
And then Jamie's question can go in there as a statement.
Statement, yep.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we want it as number five? Or as the next item? Because it, it's a question, or are we gonna reword it?
Well, I think that's a good, I think all of those are good, it would be interesting to see where people, you know, prioritize their investments.
So this would, this would be one that. It, it, your question is worded which is good. It says which natural resources need the most attention in order to improve or maintain the quality of life in Hooper? And then the items are, would you want them to be listed in order, I mean.
Yeah, they can either check with ones they agree with, or they can rate them. I didn't put like in a way to answer, so they could either say, you know, they could choose multiple, or they could, or you could do like we were saying, and you could turn it into a statement. The problem with it being a statement is if you include all those, some people may not agree, so then they're gonna disagree.
I like putting it in the format like number five and numbering them in order.
Yes, the list of natural resources that need most attention in order to improve or maintain our quality of life in Hooper are wetlands, open space, farmland, parkland. We have no lakes, so.
Great Salt Lake.
Oh, you're talking about Great Salt Lake?
Yeah.
Kind of minor.
Well, I, I agree, let's, let's turn that into question number six and have it like number five, prioritize those.
I think that would be better.
So just move that over under number, so add that. Because I think all of those things in number five are very valid.
In which spending areas would you rather the city make additional investments? Please prioritize with one being the highest. Parks and civic spaces, sidewalks, recreational trails for biking, walking, and horseback, safety improvements, road improvements, economic development, and protecting farmland. Everybody good with leaving number five, just like it is, it's good?
Yeah.
Okay, so then.
Just a question, what would you consider a safety improvement? Just what are you thinking? Blinking, blinking stop signs?
Yes, I think that's fine, because I get long tours, not on purpose.
Well, I think.
Fifty-one hundred and fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, I, I foresee we're gonna need some traffic lights at some point in time on some of these, like, four thousand, some of these crossroad intersections.
Well, and maybe, you know how they have the trailer that they park out for speeding? Like, I don't know if there's money involved, they could maybe another one of those or something. Like, to me, that would fall under safety, trying to make sure that people are, I don't know how that works or where that comes from, but.
But safety improvements, those are usually.
Flash to, it should really like, this is your speed limit, or.
It wasn't following my, I just wanna put the group.
But like you said, that, that curve on four thousand, you know, you kind of run out of that issue as well, that intersection, you know what I'm talking about?
Sure.
So.
There are people that may interpret that to mean police presence too, though. Like, I didn't think about that, but, I mean, that, that falls under safety as well. Do they think that we need to put more towards that, or, it's kind of hard because it can be interpreted.
But if, if somebody really feels like we need more safety in Hooper, then they're gonna probably call that number one, whether it be police protection or flashing stop signs or traffic signals or.
And then you could explore that, explore that in the next survey.
Yeah, like, if safety comes to the top, what things do we need to do to make it more right?
What's safe improvements?
Yeah, it's important to remember that this first survey will build the rest of the survey.
Right.
Exactly.
What, what can a city do to protect farmland? Like, what is, like, it's privately owned, so what is, what, what can a city, you know, do? I know we have that agricultural protection thing that you put on there, but what else?
That's, that's to do.
That's not, yeah.
One of those legacy farms, like house farmers, what is that?
There, there are ways that, if people were really interested in that, there are ways to do that. You, you buy up, a developer would have to buy up the building rights from, say, twenty acres of ground, now that is a farm, and he, most people who would want to sell it, you know, if they, if they inherited this ground, now they've got money to give the people that are wanting to inherit. But then, as a return on that, now he can go and develop another piece of ground and maybe be able to put a house or two extra on there. You take the development rights from over here, move it over here, now this, this remains a farm.
I just think a lot of people are gonna select that, because I think that's what a lot of people want, because like me, don't know exactly what that means, so.
There are ways to do it.
It's good, that's good, there's ways to do it, that's, that's the most important thing, so I think a lot of people select it as long as we have a way to accomplish it.
Yep, there are ways.
Okay, so after, after question number five, which we agree to leave in, then we're gonna put in this one.
For natural resources.
Regarding natural resources.
Well, that's what Jamie's concerned with.
Okay.
Is it, did it add water to that too? Because I mean, obviously, that's one of the main natural resources that we, you know, are limited on.
Sure.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And maybe we just wanna specify like lakes, like where you're saying.
On the lakes.
Like, we might wanna just specify Great Salt Lake.
Great Salt Lake.
Yeah.
Can we do anything to, I guess, like, to maintain the quality of, or?
Well, the city, they can participate in like state planning processes, and like, they can have a voice and be a stakeholder.
I think if we put water on there, definitely to specify what the lake needs to separate.
The main thing that people don't realize from the Great Salt Lake is that if we don't preserve it, the dust and stuff that comes off of that shoreline all comes into Hooper. So all of that is, you know, affected by the quality of the lake.
Mm-hmm.
So.
But we have no control over whether it lowers or raises. And when it lowers, that's when we get all of the.
Protect or something, or?
So the shoreline's state lands, but the, the, out to Fremont Island and that whole area isn't incorporated within Hooper City.
So that would be what we would be maintaining?
It's not maintaining, but just like having a voice of saying what's going on, being.
What could happen, right? Okay.
Do you know, it's, I don't think like, say, if it does dry out more, it's, it's not good stuff, is it?
No, it's terrible.
It's alkaline.
So I work for Department of Natural Resources, we're the ones who manage that area. And we've been doing a dust study for the last five years on what comes off that area, and yeah, you would be terrified.
Is it heavy metals?
Like breeding it in?
Yeah, lots of heavy metals, um, yeah, and so, that, and it, it messes with the snowpack and all of that. So the more water we can keep in the lake, the better off we all are, so. Yeah, I mean, those are things like, I would like to spend time like educating the city on through this process is, like, this is how you can be involved and know what's healthy for your citizens and why you should be involved to know this, because it's important.
Do you know the, the distance that those, those particles could travel?
Yeah, so.
He's supposed to know if they'll make it to his house.
Yeah.
Get that last one scored.
I did have to share that with his, you know.
Yeah, so I, I've got a copy of the study, you'd probably be really interested to read it. The guy actually traveled around the entire Great Salt Lake on a bike.
Wow.
And set dust particle things, but yeah, we find them clear across up to the university that have come from Great Salt Lake.
From Weber State, can we?
University of Chicago, and yeah, Weber State, we have several test stations, so. But yeah, I'll get you a copy of the study, we're five years in on it, so.
That's a big concern.
Yeah, and the wetlands out there is the other big concern. So, because it is for birds, it's, you know, national importance for migratory birds.
Okay, so we're gonna move Jamie, the question that Jamie submitted over into here.
Number six?
Yeah, well, right after number five, I think, we've lost our.
Thirty-five.
We've, we've, well, because we. We've, we've, well, because we, we threw number two out.
Yeah, so they'll all move out.
They're all gonna move out, but for purposes.
This is five eight?
No.
I was just.
It'll just insert after five.
Yeah, because we've already thrown number two out and number one is being moved to the end, so we're really not at a numerical order, we're just during our conversation here. Okay, so, question number six, it's on this sheet, how would you rate growth in Hooper over the past five years? That's, do you wanna leave it in?
Yeah.
Sure, good question.
Yep.
Okay, number seven, do you feel Hooper Park is an adequate space for tomato days and other community gatherings? What improvements, if any, would you make, be made to this site?
Maybe we could just word it and say, Hooper Park is an adequate space for tomato days and other community gatherings, agree, neutral or disagree, and if we get a lot of disagree, the next state, or the next survey can maybe.
Yeah, I don't think a lot of people realize that the city's bought that field to the east of Hooper Park either, I don't normally realize that we own, the city now owns that.
Well, we know we park there.
Seems like sometimes it's open to the parking lot.
And I don't know that we, we really need that question, because.
Yeah, we, we don't if they want that part.
We're, we're working on things, we get things coming, so I don't really know that that's a big question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know for our surveys, I'm not sure that that's even a.
Yeah.
I don't think we can do that.
An adequate question, a, a reasonable question at this point in time, I think we'll take it out.
That's good.
Okay, number eight, how important are the following statements?
Did they, did you scratch seven?
We scratched seven.
We did, we were chatting.
I know. We were talking about good stuff.
How important is the following statements, extremely to not at all? New housing should meet design guidelines set by Hooper. I can stay, I can to stay in Hooper to and through retirement.
It must be say I plan?
I plan?
So I plan?
Yeah, I plan.
Or take out the word two, I can stay in Hooper to and through retirement?
I have to make sense where it's supposed to be planned, I can't just stay in Hooper to and through retirement.
But if you take out this first two and it just says I can stay in Hooper, is that important to you, how important?
This is kind of a weird question to ask me.
Is that a can or a plan, I mean, if someone plans to be here, it's different than saying they can stay exactly.
I can.
Yep, but, but the question is how important are these following statements?
So maybe. So then it should probably say can, I can see, like I have that option if I wanted.
I can stay in Hooper to and through retirement, is that important to you? Okay, and the next one, people should be able to rent housing in Hooper?
Sure.
And I want my children to be able to stay and live in Hooper. So how important are those, we number them?
Well, 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 well.
So, so how do you want them to, how, how do we, how do we, how do we quantify this, how do we, um, how do we know extremely or not at all?
So can we do the same thing on boxes?
Actually, I would care about people that are into Hooper.
Three boxes.
Three boxes, agree, neutral, disagree?
Yeah, three boxes.
If you're three boxes.
For each one, for each statement, right?
Yeah, yeah, so like at the front, just do three little boxes.
Three boxes.
Yeah, again, this is one of those leading questions, so when we get the responses back, we'll be able to gauge where we need to spend most of that time. And then to develop community areas, um, kind of homes, things like that, townhomes, you know, um, or, um, homes that are in a specific, uh, price range.
Okay, so if we're, if we're gonna, I agree with you, Shauna.
So we did, we just need two boxes, extremely, thus very important or not important.
Well, neutral's kinda nice too, cause you don't want somebody seeing some of that.
Yeah, so we need to just maybe reword this, where it says, how important are the following statements, we need to say.
Yeah.
What about very important, somewhat important and not important?
That's good, because extremely and not at all, we, those don't really go together, so.
Okay, so now we've got very important. What was it, what did you say?
Somewhat important.
Somewhat, okay.
And then not important.
Okay, so now we got three boxes. But I think I'll take out the parentheses, extremely to not at all, just.
Yeah.
Cause you'll probably put that over the top of boxes, so they know.
Yeah, so it'll be very, yeah, it'll be at the top of each column, okay. Item number nine on here, when you think of the future of Hooper, which example of housing best fits, select all that apply. I, I don't like any of this.
I don't like this either.
I'm so.
I was like, what the heck?
Yeah.
What the, what'd you say?
What the heck?
Number nine is out.
Notice that.
Right?
I'll only let that, I only want that to be in there if I can draw my own little stick to your house, that would, that's one of the options.
So, um, conversation I had today with the girls that, with Maddie and Megan today, I, I prefaced it by saying, you know, I hope you guys. Don't think that we're some little backwater community, but actually we are and we like it. So, these townhomes honestly don't fit with our vision. Okay, item ten on here is complete the statement, Hooper needs more. Luxury housing, moderately priced, duplexes, single families, all of the above.
So I've got a question on that one that says, with continued population growth projected for Hooper City, what types of development growth would you like to see?
Where you, where you at?
It's the very, it starts on the last page of those questions I submitted and then goes on to the next, I'm just wondering.
I like, I like.
I like that better than what you have here.
Better than what you have here. I'm just wondering if that would go more.
Oh, on, of your questions, okay.
Yeah.
With continued population growth projected for Hooper City, what types of development and growth would you like to see in the, in the, in the city? Okay, and then do we want them to circle one, or?
I think it's just they can choose, you know, multiple, like, cause some people may be okay with family farms and single family residential, you know.
Would it be something you could put in order of like most important or something, like?
Just keep it the same.
Yeah, and we could do order.
Or what about just being consistent with the other questions, agree?
Yeah, you could do that too.
Neutral or?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a checkbox type of thing, okay, so.
Yeah, agree, neutral or.
So this is gonna replace number ten?
Yeah, with continued population.
And then this will be a three box thing with agree, neutral or disagree? Or? Then we probably need to reword the question, what types of development would you like to see? Single family, agree, multifamily, disagree, family farms, agree, okay.
Hey, well, maybe that's.
It will work.
Well, or I don't know.
With continued population growth projected for Hooper City, I would like to see the following types of development or something, and then they could put agree, disagree or neutral.
Or they could put check all the things, like, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, some might want.
Because, yeah, strongly agree, disagree, I don't know that matches this one.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe still, I don't also wanna do it in a format where they can rate them in order, because maybe people are okay with this, but they would like to see this more, like. I mean, when I look at that, I would like to see more of this, but I'm okay with some of these too, but that makes, unless, unless we're just gauging, I guess, and then we can get more depth on the next one, but.
This is, this is, like you say, it's a, this is a baseline, this is giving us a baseline to work with. So, do we wanna, how do we wanna redo that, with continued population growth?
I don't think they can choose, just.
What type of developments?
What ones do they want?
Can you put just like check all of the, the five?
Yeah, check all the, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay. We could do that.
I guess, so I have an option for every time that, is, is that something that the person wants to have?
Well, we, we, we've worked that in the past and.
We have this one.
Well, we did have a development, but the developers backed out, so.
I think it's valid.
But the one over on fifty five, the one over on fifty five is a fifty five and over.
But I agree. Right. And they didn't back out, so that they're.
So we have the one.
How big is it gonna be and how?
That's the one across the street from it.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen.
It's not, oh, it's.
It's like.
It's about fifty lots.
Is that fifteen?
That's fall under other too.
Is it, there's, there's two bases, and then there's about twenty, twenty-four hundred things.
Oh.
Oh, but I just said, it could fall under other, people could write that in, or we could put that on there as a choice, just, because I do think that that's a valid concern, there are people that live out here that.
It is.
If I were my neighbor, she's moving in there, cause she can't take every acre yard.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So.
You know, need to go on population studies, not familiar.
So what did we wanna call it, senior?
People that want to stay.
Senior housing?
Assisted living, or what, no, no, assisted retirement community, what's it called?
No.
I would say retirement community.
Fifty-five and older communities or something, yeah.
Retirement.
Yes, and those, those things, I, I was.
Retirement community, okay.
Stay away from assisted living.
Yeah.
But you should say, Sean.
I said, oh my gosh.
Is it retirement community or retirement housing?
Um.
Usually the.
I, housing tends to lead, like in a negative competition, so I continue to wait.
Okay, retirement community.
Yeah.
So I would represent it as just like, you're like an active community, active retirement community, fifty-five, an older community.
I like active retirement community.
Well, I don't think we need to do that.
It's retirement community.
Okay.
I'm just thinking like.
So this is check all that applies, so we're not gonna do.
Wants, is stuff that's managed by HOAs and has HOA rules and that sort of thing, so.
Well, so far, that one on fifty-five hundred south, as far as I know, is the only one that has an active HOA.
Yeah, and that's really all you want is those type of things now.
Yeah. Does, does Lethy Farms have a HOA?
Oh, yeah, no, we don't.
I know Low subdivision does, but they don't do anything with it.
Yeah, not that.
They do have.
That's an H, there's an HOA there, they pay twenty dollars a year or something.
Does it?
And they don't get anything out of that?
Well, I don't think so.
Do they have streetlights or something?
They got nothing.
It's a twidiology, you're not gonna get it.
No, it's just crazy.
HOAs are the specific to the subdivision and the city doesn't make the only good.
Yeah.
Same along the line with any kind of, um, subdivision, um, rules and regulations.
Yeah, we, I dealt with all the time when I worked in mortgage, I hated everything, but I just.
Okay, eleven. I thought that this was an interesting question, how frequently do you access the front runner station in Roy? Like it in there?
You know, I, I'm sure they would like that for, you know, transportation, future transportation needs, so, I mean, it's kind of a valid question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it have to be specific to Roy, if you say in Roy or?
How frequently do you access the front register, well, you know, in my conversation with them today, they were talking about. Future being able to have trails or whatever for people who were maybe wanting to bike from Hooper to the station.
Right, that's the.
And being able to find a corridor that they could do it safely.
That's right.
That's good.
Active transportation plan, so, yeah, I think, I think.
So, I think, okay, we can leave it in, eh, cause it's an easy question, weekly, monthly, rarely or never? Okay, number twelve, what changes to the road network are currently needed, or do you anticipate will be needed in the future?
Yeah, this is one of so many.
Uh, yeah, Doug, I don't know that that.
I just take that out for this one.
I don't think that, that needs to go in here.
We have so much in the box.
Okay, number thirteen, how often do you bike or walk around Hooper? Bike or walk? Anybody, what do you feel about that question, I think it's valid.
I'd agree, that's probably.
Well, a bunch of people, you know, ride their horses too, so is, is that a format too? I don't know if there's a way to add that in the next question.
Bike, walk, or?
I think that would, that would be a standalone question even, like, how often do you, I don't know, because I think there is, there are several people out here that would like to ride more.
Why?
Walk, or ride your Porsche.
Or maybe would you ride more if you felt like there were areas that you could, you know, maybe we could put that in somewhere, you know, places where you can ride horses or something, is something that people feel are important, or, I don't know.
So I think they're trying to get, uh, like alternative modes of transportation, is what they're trying to get at, like future stuff around here, like how many people bike or walk? To determine what happens in the future.
Right.
So I'm wondering, like on this one, I had how important is increasing alternative modes of transportation such as bus, biking, walking to the future of Hooper? Like, I'm wondering if you just combine that for a survey like this, and then if you get those answers, then you go more in depth of, okay, how often do you bike?
So, so use Jamie's instead of number thirteen, or?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm wondering if we take out thirteen and fourteen.
And fourteen.
Cause like we're getting pretty long, you know, and just condense those down.
Yeah. I just think they should have something about horses too, cause I've heard a lot of people say that they wish their horse trails were horses, cause they're afraid to have their kids.
Yeah. I would agree.
With the cars around the passing.
So.
So I think you could add like such as bus, bike, walking, horse riding, et cetera, to the future of Hooper City.
Okay, so we'll just add in there horse.
I'm sure though they're asking these specific questions and the way they are better bike lanes, more safer road courses, or, because they want to develop that.
That is part of the transportation plan, yeah.
Right.
So, I wonder how important that is to, you know, that may not be as important.
What if we just take out their team?
We're probably gonna work on that, if your question covers that.
What's that?
Yeah.
I think your question covers that.
Yeah, I think what you'll get from that question is you'll be like, okay, this is important to us, so then you can break it down in the second survey and go more into detail, okay, do we need more sidewalks, do we need better bike lanes, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, so we'll just put a checkbox by each of those, very important, somewhat important and not important, and they'll choose one?
And I think we should keep fourteen aside for the next time we do it, cause I like how that breaks it down into more detail.
I agree.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so thirteen's out right now, or do we wanna leave it in?
Thirteen's out, and then fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen are, are, are out right now and fourteen, we wanna maybe keep for next time. Okay.
But are you going to put in how important?
Yeah.
Is increasing how.
Yeah, so then we stick in that question.
And then we're putting in Jamie's number. Okay.
Okay, so number to fifteen, I want to see if there's more needed.
Can I have one of those?
Which do you feel is more needed, new parks, improvement of existing parks?
I would wish, my perspective.
But we're constantly improving the parks we have.
I don't, that, I wish we could improve our parks before we get more, I really, from my perspective, because there, this park here has been, I mean, what do we do with this park?
Well, we are, I think we're in the process of improving that, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, we're, we're working on that a lot.
Doing that.
So, um.
But I think it'd be interesting to get our public input, whether they feel like, I mean, like, these people all up north of four thousand that are coming in, they don't have a park.
Nope, there's a massive people.
There's a lot of people with no park close by.
And the, and the question for new parks, if, if a lot of, a lot of residents come back and they ask new parks, it's gonna take, it's gonna be a lot of planning. Um, and a lot of discussion on how to actually procure that ground, if it's even possible, so it's like the city holding and buying ground for a future park as we're working on improving the parks that we have, the budget will be.
I think this is another reason too, why it's so important to know where these answers are coming in from, because if we get a ton from over in that area, then as a planning commission, we can look at it and say. Okay, maybe over there, there needs to be, we need to look at the land that's available and maybe think about that for a park or something, I don't know.
And, and put that in, incorporate that in the general plan, and then if you, when a developer sees that, it's like, uh, you have to do something about it.
Yes, future parks.
Yeah, and if we talk, for sure, that's what we talked about.
Well, so, just quickly going down that road, do we, do we approach a specific land over, landowner and say, we'd kinda like to set your land aside for a future park? And if it comes across, we want, the city wants first option to purchase it for that park?
You know, we could put an overlay on that piece of ground as a future park.
And that's not infringing on the property owner's bundle of rights?
Could we, do you?
Cause he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to do that, or a developer doesn't have to do it, but if he's gonna build there, we would make him do it. Did you, you see what I mean, there's gotta be a trade off for him.
Yeah.
But we want him to know that if they're, if they're going to build more homes over there, they've gotta.
But let's, let's say.
And not out.
Let's say Eileen Hall decides, her family survivors decide, they wanna sell that to a developer, but Hooper City wants it to be a park. We have to pay market value and and acquire it?
Yeah.
So that we can set it aside?
But we do.
But in our general plan, we can, we could overlay it as a proposed future park?
That's what was planned, that, that's what the group was planning.
Okay. Do we, in, can we just arbitrarily do that, or do we have to actually?
No, it would, it would need, it would need to be solidified.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, we'd have to, we'd have to talk to the current landlords.
Well.
But not.
You know, when we, you know, all these overlays for, you know, an R two.
Ag protection and all that.
We just kind of plugged them in where we thought it was practical as far as what the sewer could provide.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean, Shawna? I mean, we have to have a reason.
Well, you've seen, you've seen the plan for the future parks and towns in that.
Yeah, there's eighteen future parks flat out in Hooper.
Yeah, and I mean, that, to me, down that way, you've been down on targeting.
Did you guys know that?
Yeah, I read through it, I was like, holy cow.
There's a hair coach.
Yeah, we have eighteen future parks planned, we have those three.
There's hair, it's true. And then we get right there, that would be an idea.
That's crazy, isn't it?
Could we put something in place where, let's say we get these surveys back and that pocket over there has a demand for that? And so, not necessarily one piece of land, but maybe a section over there or a district or something, you say, in this area, we're putting an overlay in place that if any development or anything like that goes on, that part of that agreement needs to be that so much land is set aside to become a park or something like that, so that the developer is paying to put it in, not, not us necessarily.
Right, so there'd have to be some kind of incentive for him to be willing to help us out with that.
He gets to build in Hooper? I'm just kidding.
So then leave the question in or not?
I, I think, yeah, I want, I want fifteen left in, which do you feel is more needed, new parks, improvement?
All right.
Because I think.
Or are there any people in Hooper that would be willing to donate any of their ground? Have you had the. Well, we do have developers that will donate some ground that we had.
All the swamp ground that they can't drink.
It's not, I don't know that I want the developers leftovers, I want the, and that's what we.
That's exactly what they want to donate to us, is their leftovers that they, that they can't drink.
So fifteen, we left that as the.
Fifteen staying in, okay. Item sixteen on this particular list, are you interested in participating in focus group? Yes or no? If so, we need you to give us your name and address, please.
Well.
I just don't think it should be optional, I think they have to give us.
Name and email address, that's what, that's what I need.
Yeah. Well.
I would just say name and email.
But if we have their address, then we know what district they're from, what area they came from.
Then we know what they're from.
Yes.
But some older people don't.
But that should be, that's what you were talking about, is putting that up front, right, so when you go to develop a survey, you're going to list your name, address, and emails.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that way, if they do say yes, we can tag, slide this off aside, yes.
So do we leave this in here as it is? Focus groups will identify problems and create solutions. I think it's a yes or no.
I think so.
Yeah.
Does that, April twenty twenty one, does that go with the new timeline?
Um, more or less.
More or less.
Yeah, it could, it could be extended.
You can add approximately April twenty twenty one if you need to be.
Yeah. Until approximately April twenty twenty one.
We have to say anything in there about that? Or it consists of five to six, five to six people?
I will meet two or three times from now until the plan is, maybe we could put from now until the plan is finalized.
We need to work on that. I thought on the website thing it said.
I think it does say that.
It does.
I submitted by days that have agreed to.
Okay. It was just, that website thing was just changed this afternoon.
Oh, was it?
In, in the course of my conversation with them, just getting things more correct with dates and things. But I think it still does say April twenty twenty one, but it's pretty broad.
And we're wanting five to six in our focus groups, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I need to, I have a few hours, I have one, I asked another one, but they're on the.
Well, but we've got, but we want, we want to get names of people who want to lead a focus group, so.
And I, I've got five, I've got five names.
Have they been, so Megan and Maddie both requested that if we have a list of names that we get to them, because then they were going to send.
I did, I emailed them, and they have their emails.
Okay. And they were, so then they would send out specific.
Right.
Like a focus group, they're going to sit down and they'll have these lists of questions, so each focus group is going to kind of ask the same questions, is how I understood it to be.
Well, and maybe I might be confused, so when we talked about these little subcommittees that we're having, like, is that the same thing as a focus group, or am I misunderstanding that?
Well, I think we started out trying, as each planning commissioner, working on certain aspects.
They're calling some different.
But I think.
So it's the same thing as the people that I've asked to help with zoning?
Yeah, I.
And, okay.
Yeah.
But then again, though, you can, you can have.
But then you can have these little small focus groups, five or six, that would meet and discuss or get, gather information, and then report back to you and say, well, I talked to these five people, and this is what we came up with as far as land use.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't misreading.
So the, if I was to say a number of people, do we want to have five to six on here, or do we want to get that more open ended?
You really don't need to tell them, the focus group will exist of five to six, just say the focus group will meet, you know, three times from now, April.
Exactly. Are you interested in producing a focus group?
They just fill out a form, right?
A focus group will.
Well, this is, so I hear you say participate, and you probably storm to host it as well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it says there'll be online meetings.
So I think Sheldon, in the, in the website, doesn't it say, are you asking if you want to host a focus group?
Well, actually, it's to join a focus group, but I suppose to, to host one, but, so it says, please click here to.
I think it's join, I think they'll host it, won't they?
Yes, or the people we submit, I guess, so, so the host will get information on how to conduct the.
Right, right. We're just, we're, we're looking for volun, for people who want to.
So, yeah, leave it in, if so, anything will say, there's no transparency, blah, blah, blah.
Be a little bit more. Yeah. Yeah, we're looking for people that want, we're looking for people who want to be a little more involved.
So can you, so are we lining out a focus group will consist of five to six people and will meet three to three times from now until April twenty twenty one? Just take that out and leave everything?
I think we could leave, will meet two to three times, just so people know, this isn't going to be like week meeting or something.
Well, I. I think they need to know what kind of obligation.
Yeah, that's right.
But the focus group will meet.
Two, three times.
Two to three times.
Okay.
We don't need to say how many people are going to be.
And do you want it to say until approximately April twenty twenty, or until the general plan is?
Yeah.
I think that's good, but.
Approximately, probably.
Just approximately April?
It will meet two to three times from now until April twenty first.
I'm going to put in the word approximately.
Yeah, because with COVID, who knows?
Yeah, and I, I take the video out, and that's my recommendation, just they'll meet two or three times. The focus group will meet two, three times between.
What about just two or three times now through the planning session?
For the planning process.
Part process.
Until the.
Focus group will meet two to three times during the planning process.
Okay.
Does that sound?
You have to match, read the English language, that sounds. During the planning process? Is that what you said?
Yes.
And I would say if they commit, then yeah, number seventeen ought to be left in there.
Yeah.
If they commit what?
To be on the focus group.
Well, it says if yes, which focus group are you most interested in, so.
Do we only have three? Because aren't we going to have one, like, isn't Bryce doing the commercials?
We need to add a commercial.
Can he be on more than one? Sure.
Sure.
Why not? How hard do you want to work?
So Nate.
I'm sorry, people, but we're on more than one.
Nate was doing over open space and recreation, right, and weren't you doing parks and trails or something like that? Wasn't that supposed to be on there too?
Yeah, and. And that's.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that this is different than that, because these are, obviously, these aren't all the components of the general plan.
Right.
So were these, were these just the ones that they recommended they afford?
These are just the main ones, these are just the main ones that you can add, I mean, you can add, you can take.
Currently, the website only has these three, the website has a rent is one to three, but you choose one, two, or three, but right now, basically.
Right. That might be a question to ask.
We do have, we do have a purpose plan already.
Right.
And so it's really just keying whether or not their residents want us to engage and fulfill that. And that's just a question to, so maybe the parks one isn't necessarily needed right there.
Well, and I think open space and recreation, the recreation kind of covers, kind of covers the parks and trails, or the.
Would you put open space with recreation? Or would you put open space with land use and housing, or, to me, I don't see that close in with recreation, but I don't.
I think open space is just.
Open space.
Maybe open space and trails?
Yeah, maybe.
So open.
I just, I think when you.
But recreation, recreation is.
Yeah, I don't know.
So let's leave open space.
People do more recreation and assume that we'll be.
Well, whatever, this is to match the website, so that it's not having.
They can fix.
But, but they're going to modify the website, Sheldon.
Yeah, just make sure that this matches.
Yeah. So. So we've got land use and housing, transportation, we'll have open space, commercial, recreation, parks and trails.
But, but, like I say, I, I think you don't have to have all of those right here, because when we're in the general plan, I mean, Bryce is still going to be over commercial, he's still going to, do they, do we want focus groups on all those, or is that going to be something after April twenty first?
Well, I think, I think. Well, I still think that the focus groups are going to be valuable to Bryce, because they're, they're going to get together and give five, you know, five or six people
Because each one.
hashing out ideas and then.
I want to ask some of the landowners that own the commercial, like, what's your intentions, you know, what?
Yeah.
What are you going to do with it?
Yeah, I, I can steer you to talk to a few people, lines, people try to, okay, hang out.
Okay, so.
I think it would be good if we had, because, I mean, I've reached out to some people, but this is going to reach a lot of people that I wouldn't necessarily go up to and say, hey, do you want to participate in this committee? And so when we get those that come in, and if we have a bunch of people that are interested in land use and housing, then that's, I just think that's a good resource to have them come in, so that, so that we're reaching more people, I guess, to serve on those committees, I don't know. Unless I'm misunderstanding what a focus group is, I guess I'm still confused.
Well, a focus group is like, a focus group is like a subgroup of your.
You don't have to go, you kind of turn it over, you go gather information.
Your sector. So you'll have, you'll, one guy will be, agree to be a host of the focus group, they'll go five, five more, talk to them, gather information, come up with two or three points that they think are solid, and then bring them to you, and then that will come back to this committee.
So wouldn't that be kind of what we've been trying to do, is like, if I say six people say they're interested, so now I have those six people, I talk to them, and I say, can you get together with people in your areas?
We can do that.
And then report back, so that we're getting as much information as we can.
I think these are just more specialized, you know, because they're just dealing with transportation.
So where, Amanda, in what you just said, where does this focus group start? And that, that, you know.
Well, to me, I feel like before we send out the next survey, maybe, I don't know, I mean.
I mean, before you just explained, where would, where would the focus group fit?
Well, that would be.
Is that, is that the ones that you've already talked to?
Are you talking? That's what, well, that's what I was confused about, because I've already talked to some people.
Or is it the ones? So if they go out and find people, is that the focus group? That's, that's.
I guess the focus group to me would be the people, like, when it says, are you interested in participating in a focus group? Those people that are interested, I would say, are willing to maybe host it, that's how I'm looking at it, and they would be able to get their own little group together.
Oh, see, I, I, I don't think that's what it is.
They're participating, but.
I don't, the focus group is because, I mean, you're going to have a hard time getting that many people for each one, so you're going to have five or six people in this focus group, and it's going to be conducted not by one of them, but by someone.
That we've reached out to, okay.
Yes. Or that.
That's why.
I'm happy to host one, it would be a lot easier for me if the survey supplied the people.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think you're asking them to be on this, the focus group they're going to conduct it, or they're going to.
Otherwise, it'll just be my closest five neighbors.
Do you want me to?
Well, and, and that's why we were asking this question, do you want to be on one, yes or no?
So what else would you add? Commercial?
I would add commercial, and then, I, I, I feel at this point in time, we can leave open space and recreation together.
Yeah.
Just knowing that that covers parks and trails as well. So just add commercial, land use and housing, transportation.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, technically, in these terms, land use includes zoning, so that would be there, and housing includes zoning, and then transportation, which is important, when we talked about that, you've got open space and recreation, which includes parks and the current plans we have, and then I do think it's really important to enter commercials.
Yeah.
Whether that's small business or manufacturing.
Right.
Perfect.
Okay. Item eighteen, what do you think, in or out?
What does it, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I don't.
Is it?
I don't care how long they've lived here.
Is it?
Yeah, I don't.
It doesn't make a difference, I guess it could be kind of divisive to have that in there, but.
If people must, what difference does it make how long I live here? I live in Hooper.
Other than, I'm curious how people's minds work, so, like, it would be interesting to just see if it plays.
But if there are those people that have lived here very long, select people that have lived here a long time.
Right.
And that's where I think the problem could come.
Why are you asking me this? I'm, I live here, so, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, maybe we should take it out, just so it isn't at all inflammatory, yes.
Just a pos, controversy.
Putting Hooper first, I mean, no matter how long they've lived here.
Yes. I mean, just because I'm, I always like to see how people's minds work, it's a curious theme to me, because I'm just like, is it, to make a difference, but
I would like to know too, but I think it's not worth it, it's just bad.
It probably won't be very productive to put it in there.
And, and what would we do with the statistics?
Yeah, I would just, we could refine it.
That's what I guess, I'll be the center.
I think it'd be interesting to know.
I, I agree, I just think it's not.
It's not as close as somebody else's.
Everybody is there going to contribute to the.
Maybe you'd use it on the.
We'll refine it in time, sure.
Okay.
Okay, and the same.
I don't think it's a politician.
No.
And this, so, so, so for the time being, number eighteen is not, number eighteen is not going to go on the initial survey.
So take out.
Uh, nineteen?
Out.
Your audience is leaving.
Oh, but you've been.
Can't say nobody came, but.
But you've been such a good audience.
I've got a good place for the water tower.
Good, where?
It's right by the old city office building.
Yeah, right across the street, oh, right here?
Right from his house.
The old, old.
Yeah, we'll hold it. If you have them buying, I'd take the, that any day.
It's for the cell towers, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, right over here.
Yeah.
Is the cell tower not working?
Oh, no, that cell tower works.
Yeah.
Well, you make it, okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, appreciate that time. I'm about to get all your neighbors berated.
We're, we're trying to do our job.
Yeah, you're doing good, thank you.
Okay, age range, important, not important?
No, I'd say take it out.
Yeah.
I don't like that either.
You look sensitive on the age map.
A little bit, I don't know why, Bryce, like, has some.
Well, my problem is she'll have to put it on the state side, so.
Okay, and then, which city council district do you live?
The Madam or Sixth.
And we have a sixth district here.
And I think you need to put on there, don't know, because most people.
Well, that's why they have a map.
But, so in that little box, we're going to put a map.
Okay.
So that they can look and say, oh.
Sure we can read it.
Guess what? I'm in District Three.
That's awfully small, and to see addresses and stuff, I can't even see it on the website, but I'm blind, so.
But you can, but you can see generally, okay, I'm over.
And you can see that maybe this on there.
And it'll be color coded.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Jamie had a few other questions, so I don't know if, I don't know how many we've got here.
Well, they're combined for the, for the three.
Oh, so then at the end.
We're going to drop it down there.
We're going to put.
That's my point, see, it's not one, two, three, four, five, it's, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that other question.
Okay.
But that's more, like, the city council.
So then at the end, we're going to put a comment box. We want it to title, what is your favorite thing about Hooper, or what is your vision of Hooper, or?
What if we just put something like, do you, any other comments you suggest?
I just think you put additional comments. You mentioned, um, what's your favorite thing about Hooper, right? So Wasatch Regional Council asked if we wanted to reach out to elementary schools, um, you know, and things like that, so that is a fun question about, what's your favorite thing about Hooper, let them draw a picture, we can play them up here, you know.
Yeah, you need separate from this survey.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I love surveys, but you said that.
Separate from the survey.
So don't put it in the survey. Oh, you, no, you can, I'm just saying that's additional, sorry.
I, I like doing that.
Sean, I can hear you, I was, I was just thinking, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Do you wanna join the meeting, Mayor?
I was kinda making sure we got the districts right.
Just on the, what's your favorite thing about Hooper, I know we had said like, we're going to move that to the end of the survey, kind of let people fill that out. Um, but then Wasatch Regional Council asked if like, we wanted to maybe try to reach out to the elementary schools in this area. And then just kind of give them like a call to page, you know, with that question on there, and just, um, then cross something and bring it back into the city and give them some questions over, display those.
I think that's great.
That's a good idea.
I love that.
So if you guys, okay, wait, let's.
Well, I would just put additional comments.
Yeah, I think, I think that's.
Okay, I really, I really want to put a question in there that says, please describe your vision for Hooper.
For how long a time? I, because I would say.
Your vision for Hooper for the next fifteen years?
What, you said fifteen to twenty years, and see, I think just the idea of having a vision from one amended general plan to the next will, will never work.
Oh, yeah, that's five years.
You've got, you have fifteen of us.
Yeah.
So I have the question here that if this continues to grow, maintaining Hooper's rural character and small town feel is important to the fut- future of Hooper City. I don't know if something like that would work for you, like.
Agree, strongly disagree?
Yeah, and then you could build off of it in the next survey, you know, if you then wanted to do like a text box or something like. You know, and, I mean, I'm just suggesting, I'm not married to any of these questions, they're just total suggestions, so.
So let's look at some of Jamie's other questions, just see if we want to include them, okay? Uh, her first question was, current zoning regs and regulations in place to protect public health safety, preserve agriculture are too strict, adequate, not strict enough, or I have no opinion?
I don't think people know what they are, so I don't think that's gonna.
Okay. Okay.
And that, if you know what they are, you think.
Yeah.
If you know what they are, okay, so then moving down, um, how would you rate existing community partnerships and intergovernmental cooperation in Hooper City? I don't think anybody can answer that one either. Excellent, good, fair, no comment, growth in rural areas to focus on.
I think. Yes, I, I agree with you on that too.
Okay, um, we're doing that bottom one, as the city, like she just talked about, Jamie, as the city continues to grow, maintaining Hooper City's rural character and small town feel is important to the future of Hooper City, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, strongly agree?
I think it's reasonable to have that.
Do you like that, do you like that question? Put it in the.
I think this is something that.
I think you could predict the answer on that one.
Yes.
So, but it's good to know.
It is good to know you're gonna be careful you're not needing the survey to have a specific.
Say that again, what?
So, if you're gonna, you know, you're asking people, do you want the rural, the rural publicity?
Uh-huh.
And people are going to answer yes, like every time.
Right, we pretty much know the answer.
We know the answer to that, um, a lot of it, we don't have much control over, those are things that ordinancees need to be created in order to sustain a rural or local.
Right.
Facility, um, and so you wanna make sure if you do put questions in there, they're not going to always lead to an answer that you may be wanting.
Right.
So that's, that's leading, that's great.
Yeah, I think it, it, it is a leading question.
I think it's a leading question, but I think it's something that gets easily psyched back at any point and say, this is what you had wanted.
I think the other part of that too, my definition, and my neighbor across the street.
Yes.
We have a different definition of what rural is.
Yeah.
There are people that think one acre lots are bigger, there are people that think five acre lots, there's people that think half acre is rural, and so.
Well, and I mean, some of it is townhome next to a cornfield.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's rural to them, and so you just.
Yeah, that's very subjective, so.
Do any of our other questions kind of touch on that?
What about this local food production?
This small town feel.
Not sure about that.
Wasn't one of them that we talked about on the.
I think you could, you thought, um, those next two, I don't think we really have any control over, and. Yeah.
Preserving existing ag land should be planning priority for Hooper?
A lot of that's.
We, we, we pretty much know how that's gonna be answered anyway, right? Based on how people come to our meetings.
But it's not something that you really have control over.
Right.
Right, do we, sorry, go back to this, but on question four, you know, it talks about parks, it talks about Main Street, it talks about a commercial area, and then we have duplexes and townhomes. But as far as something, you know, with land use being used for farms or for more, or more rural feel, I don't know if there's something we could.
Do you wanna add another, another box?
I just don't think that's being represented necessarily, I mean, they can say they don't agree with duplexes and townhomes, but that doesn't necessarily mean that, I don't know, I just wanna make sure we're.
That would be a good place to put it.
How strongly do, okay.
I just want everyone to feel represented, so.
Okay, so tell us what you wanna say, Amanda.
Oh, I don't know what I want to say. First time in my life, I'm just kidding. I, I don't know, how should we word it?
Well, maybe it's something along the lines of like, just, um.
A rural feel.
Well, or like agriculture and.
Larger lots, or something like that, like, which again, it depends on how you interpret that, but I think that, well, but, but we've got that on here with duplexes and townhomes.
Large.
That's a leading question. Hooper should provide more housing choices to include duplexes and townhomes?
Maybe there's something that says Hooper, I don't know, anything for.
You wanna say Hooper should, um.
A lot of.
Only have single family housing, single family dwellings?
I mean, on, on ten that we already made a replacement with Jamie's journal question, you could take out the single family homes on large, on larger lots, you could just add that. I, I understand rural, I, I just do think that could potentially get you into a kind of a sticky situation.
Hooper City.
Single family homes on large rural lots?
I think that, something like that, um.
Well, I'm playing.
Making sure you're adding context to what you mean by rural.
Rural, yeah, that's what I'm afraid of, how to word it.
So. Hooper City should have.
A larger rural in there, a, a more descriptive.
Should, should. Hooper should, City should be developed with.
Maybe you say, how do you define rural, half acre lots and, or, like, I don't know, I don't know if I'm gonna get into that.
That would be, that's, that's probably more a focus group question, too.
Hooper City should develop, um, not develop, should grow with single family homes on larger lots, larger lots?
Maybe you could put something like that, Hooper, uh.
The growth of Hooper City should be.
Well, I'm playing with the.
Single family homes on larger lots. Zoning regulations should take into consideration that lots will, or should encourage, the general plan should encourage.
How about?
Larger lots, single family residences on larger lots or something like that, I don't know if you wanna specifically say larger than, but.
One thing that I'd like to see, I would start planning, is if we could get the frontage increased on acre lots and half acre lots.
Frontage increase?
Yeah, and, uh, so go to, well, they have a true full acre lot, which is forty-four thousand square feet, not the four thousand square feet, and a half acre lot, the twenty-two thousand square feet, not the twenty thousand?
No.
Twenty-two, twenty-five sixty.
Forty-three, five sixty, if you wanna be right there.
So that's what I'm saying, is that's something that I would like to see happen, so I don't know, that, it might be a little like, too much too soon for this.
Yeah.
That could be more focused, but I agree, I think frontage is, it's a win to frontage is, is the key.
Yeah.
How, how it feels going through.
Because as you drive.
You feel very, like, you don't feel cramped, you know.
I feel like our half acre lot should still have a hundred and fifty foot frontage, not a hundred feet.
I feel the same way. I, I was being nice at one twenty, but one fifty would be even better, I think if you look at where Nate, because I didn't look it up to see, but we almost bought a lot on the same street that Nate Platt lives on, because that frontage was so wide and there were half acre lots. And that was one of the only spots we found with that much frontage, you go down that street and they just feel, they're half acre lots, but they feel a lot nicer.
Right, because they've got.
They have a lot better half acre lots.
That's a zoning ordinance that we just have to change.
Exactly, so that's one thing that I would love to see happen in the general plan.
Well, maybe in a future survey, that's a little bit more detailed, depending on how things come back with this, we could hit on that, and so. I just, I don't know, I just feel like maybe in that question, there needs to be something representing that.
Okay, so.
You know, I agree, because you've got commercial, you've got other housing choices.
So how about we say this, the growth of Hooper City, this is, how strongly do you agree with the following statement regarding land use? The growth of Hooper City should.
I think it should be something like.
Hooper City should encourage, maybe.
Not only that, but I would just say something like, um, subdivisions should maintain an open field, or something along those lines.
The growth of Hooper City should be limited to single family homes on large lots. See what comes back.
That's a little direct.
Maybe encourage, instead of be limited to, um. Hooper City should encourage.
The growth of Hooper City should be.
Single family homes on larger lots.
Should be, should be.
Large, I mean.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Should be single.
Larger lots.
Larger, I like larger better.
I like larger.
And then, when we go back, because a lot of people will probably indicate that, that's when we can say, how can we accomplish this?
Yeah.
More footage, or more frontage, and, you know.
Right.
Right.
So, the growth of Hooper's.
You're putting that under four, right?
Here's, here's item number four.
On the number four.
Correct, item four.
Item four, and that, a new checkbox to say, the growth of Hooper City should be single family homes on large lots.
Can we say?
How strongly do you agree with that following statement?
Can we say Hooper City should encourage?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, rural should be.
Uh, single family homes on larger lots.
On larger lots, yes.
Hooper City should encourage.
Then it's not so absolute.
I like that.
And larger, we already kind of got the ball rolling in that direction.
Hooper City should encourage single family homes on larger lots, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Larger than what?
Exactly.
Well, do we say half acre or larger, I mean, do we wanna be that specific with it, or?
I, I think it's best left up to interpretation, what, in their mind, but, you know.
And then maybe you go back in a future survey and say, what do you mean by?
Okay, so larger lots, what, okay.
What's that one?
Okay, are we, are we going to?
Read that one more time, you're in my.
Hooper City. Do you want me to spell it for you?
Oh, Mary.
Right up there.
Dale, you know I love you. Hooper City should encourage single family homes on larger lots.
Okay.
Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, do we all agree, that's a good statement? Okay. Do we want to have a comment box at the end?
Yes.
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 Just.
Cause that is, they're going to.
Okay. So another item.
Yes.
What's that?
Why, why would you do that?
Computer, but.
Please, what do we do, put, please include any additional comments you wish?
Yeah.
I would put the middle.
Yeah, they should let it, it's like a hundred characters, maybe fifty.
Yeah, something, you're gonna get one fifty here.
Limited to a tweet.
Yeah.
Ah, nobody's gonna write a book, you don't have.
No.
Not by hand, but online they might.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, hopefully people are gonna read this comment, we're gonna be interested in the focus group.
Right. Yeah.
I, I think you're probably right.
Maybe when they hit like a hundred, it should pop up and say, join the focus group.
If, if they, if they mark. Oh, there, there we go. If you have a hundred and one characters, you're a focus group member, congratulations.
You just won the prize, you're in the focus group.
Okay. Now, how do we, um, where do we put, and how do we identify who sent me this survey?
I think.
Like, at the front, are we gonna ask for, or at the end, or are we gonna ask for an optional name and address? And if, if you encourage it, or if you.
We talked about that, yeah.
I think it should go at the very beginning of this survey.
So if you're, if so.
So my, my history.
And not optional.
Doing like tens of thousands of, you know, column people get insurance quotes, you ask the hard questions at the end. You build the trust, put the questions at the beginning.
At the easy, okay.
And then I just, I just feel like, if I was doing this, I would ask that at the end, because I know a lot of my people are interested, they wanna, you know, they're kind of invested at that point. I worry if you put that at the front, people will be like, this is anonymous, and they'll feel.
Right.
In today's day and age, they'll feel very guarded, and maybe won't answer.
So. How about?
That's good.
So if we put it as an optional?
I don't think it should be optional, because especially.
I, I think an address should be, you know.
Yeah, it should.
But, but if you put an address in, then I don't know if our system's gonna be smart enough to automatically assign them to a district, or, and, and we could take that question.
No, that would have to be built within GIS system, but I, I believe Wasatch Regional Council has the ability to go rather than the GIS system. We have GIS, and we have a capability, it's, we don't have, we just don't have, uh, anyway, so yeah, I think Wasatch Regional Council can do that.
I'm, I'm just saying that different, because that would be, because that's at the end of the survey already, that's a decent place for.
So what do we put, please provide your, your property address?
Yeah, the last question, what, instead of what district you live in, you put your, your address, yeah.
Which city council district do you live, or, or, instead of doing that, just say, please provide your residential ha- address?
Especially if the system's gonna be smart enough to assign it in the background.
Yeah, we, we can help, I don't know, I think before you omit that question, we should talk.
Yeah.
So.
But it, you're gonna want to get focus group information, and this survey is going to ask people to be on focus groups, and you're gonna need a name.
Yeah.
Right.
So if you're not gonna have a contact information, then that probably should be.
So, so can we just put that at the very end, please provide your name and, and residential address?
I think it's best at the end.
And you could put a place on there for email optional, or something, if they want to do that, too.
Your email could be optional, I think, yeah.
How can we contact you?
Yeah.
Your contact information.
Or you can add that too, I don't have that actually.
I think I can, but I don't know, I gotta put that.
Right. And then.
Maybe you put a note, like, make this most valuable for us, to make sure.
Because we wanna make sure we reach everybody who are asking that you, or, I wouldn't ask, I could say, you need to get this.
Well, and we also talked about some kind of incentive to get them to provide their name and address, put their name in a drawing or something like that for.
Yeah.
You could just put, all return surveys will be under.
You're in for lunch with the mayor.
We don't, we, we don't want that mayor return.
We're so humble.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you go.
Can, can we, can we offer up a tomato? As a drawing prize?
If people return their survey?
Uh-huh.
Or a gift card, I don't know, I.
I don't think we have the.
They're expensive, aren't they?
Well, no.
They're expensive, Bob, two bucks.
The big ones.
Yeah, um, we have tomatoes to give away if that is approved, or you can have to quantify, because I don't know what kind of, or the amount for gift card if you wanted to give, or.
I just see who's gonna return their surveys, I wouldn't worry about any incentive, but.
Okay, I just, like I said, or.
I would, I would do.
Like we said at the very first of the meeting, how do we get the most response possible, sometimes you got.
I don't think it would hurt to add a incentive.
Sometimes, I think sometimes you gotta.
What is your, what is your time of the call?
There are people, like, like my sister, she's all about that type of stuff, so she may be more inspired to do it, if.
Did, did, I guess somebody went calling from the help there?
Yeah, I can't remember, I'm gonna share it again, yeah.
So yea or nay on entering names in a drawing?
I don't think it would hurt.
I say yea.
I definitely.
Sorry, since.
No, don't apologize. Well, and you could do more, you could do like, you know, you could do a tomato, you could do a gift card, you could, you know, you could do a few things, drop.
Should you go have some made up for it?
I guess you don't have to tell them, you can say for a prize, but then they might think, well, it might be a bumper sticker.
What about these Halloween night?
We can do it right before Halloween night. Okay.
Maybe, also put maybe return by.
Or just as soon as possible.
Yeah, just, so.
Well, I think, we need a date when we need to have these back in, for sure.
Will they, will they be able to come to the office?
From, are they dropping it off, or are we onlining it and then seeing who responds, what are we, or what are we doing?
Well. It's gonna be an email, uh, I mean, anything that's on the website, and if they do it electronically, it'll be tabulated, WFR will do it. Paper ones, if they get returned here, then we get to do it. Paper ones, if they get returned here, then we get to do it.
So they have November seventeenth as number one survey. Survey number one is due. So is that what we're?
So now it's gonna go to the thirty first, did you say? Are we?
We're mailing it out on the twenty eighth. Survey number one will be available. It'll be mailed and online.
October twenty eighth.
October twenty eighth, sorry, next week.
By November seventeenth.
And do we have, can they just drop it off here if they don't wanna mail it, or like, do we have options to let them understand?
It's whatever you want. They can put things in the drop box and they can collect them. That's just fine.
I think we need to just make sure they know whoever the way they could do it.
I just wanna make sure that-
Make sure they put it in the drop box, not the voting box?
It doesn't matter. Maybe plug in here and then I can work with the Wasatch Regional Council. Maybe possibly get that into an Excel sheet. My guess is they're probably going to be using Google Survey. I don't know for sure, but that's my guess.
I thought I heard them say Monkey Survey or something.
Monkey Survey, I don't know. My guess is it downloads into some type of Excel sheet, and if I can formulate that similar to what they'll get, then they could probably combine that data.
Yeah.
You can just pull those right out of Survey Monkey into an Excel.
Yeah.
So however they set that up, I can send up some work.
Yeah, they said they were using Survey Monkey, so.
I just think it's important that whatever goes out to them, and be bold. Here are your options for returning this. You can drop it off in the drop box. You can do it online.
And, and the-
So that people are aware.
They're gonna create a, Wasatch Front's gonna create a flyer that will also be on the front of the website and in the mailer. And I don't know if you, you guys all wanna see that before it goes out? If you do-
I think, I would like to. I think-
You should email it to us.
Yeah, we can just email it all quickly, but we wanna get these in the mail and out by next Wednesday, so a week from today.
So what is that going to do then? Like, because on here, it shows the last week in October, our focus groups will be meeting. We're gonna bump that down now, right?
I mean, is that even, I think you could get the survey online. I don't know if it's physically possible for me to get the printing to the printer and then returned.
And back again.
In the, in that.
Well, and if people, if the surveys aren't due until November, we won't even know who wants to be on those focus groups-
Right.
Until those come back in.
So what are you reading?
So on there, they have focus groups meeting this last week in October. I think we need to do that past November seventeenth because-
I'm pretty sure that that's been modified.
So we need a finalized survey.
Did you look at this one?
So in order for me to get out of there, I need Wasatch Regional Council to have me, to me exactly what I need by like Monday or Tuesday. And I give that to the printer. That's usually about two days. And then I've gotta get those to the folks out.
So realistically, these aren't gonna go out on the twenty eighth then, right? What's today? The twenty?
Plus over from today.
Yeah.
I think you-
Would that give you enough time?
You can have that posted on the website by the twenty eighth, but it's no, which is really, there's no way for me to really get those all printed in time. It might be the next week.
Might be like a day or two or a week, yeah.
So that makes sense because we have to have that.
Changed today during this conversation, so this one, the twenty first, that wasn't updated until four o'clock today.
I don't know how that's, for sure, but Mary's gonna need the changes to them, and they're creating a new survey, if they're creating the flyers, and they can give that to me for sure, and then I can add. It would just be, however many pages our survey ends up being, how we're going to encompass that. If they're doing a one-page flyer, um-
Yes, that's what they said.
Maybe if you still wanted to print the resolution and send that out. Also, we could maybe do like a, kinda like a booklet where this has a front page flyer, this has a resolution, and it's sandwiched in between that and pulled in is our survey.
How about we do the resolution separate? Just so it, just, 'cause I don't know how it really fits with this, with this sort of a company.
It's why we're doing this, isn't it?
That's what-
Isn't it why we are doing the general plan?
Well, I think if you build a lot together, people have like too many papers, you know what I mean?
That's what I worry about getting lost. But if we have the, you know, I don't know, I don't know if there's some way to advertise it, you know, just so you're aware, Hopper City's passed this resolution, you can view it on the website. I don't know. I just worry about it.
Huh?
Maybe with that in the newsletter?
Yeah, we could put that in a newsletter, right?
I personally, my personal opinion is I would not send that resolution out, like with this. I just wouldn't. I think you're just gonna have people reading it and nitpicking and losing the whole purpose of this.
So just focus on the survey?
And it's gonna totally, like if people get mad at the resolution, or they're happy about the resolution, it could really like influence what they say on here.
I agree.
Good point.
I would just leave it out.
Good point. Okay. Resolution's available, it's on the website. If someone wants it, they can come in and get a copy here from the office, right?
Yeah, what I can do is I could post the resolution on our Hopper City general plan page. And then, though that would be a direct link to like the Wasatch Front Regional Council, it would be on their page, but it is posted on our page for people to see. And then we will post it out on the front wall. I just got, got a lot up there right now with the general, with election happening. Those amendments are posted and things like that, so it's gonna come down. I'll get that posted.
Okay.
For the average citizen, it doesn't really affect them. So if the developers are aware, and they know-
But if it's on the Hopper City website, and someone asks, where can I see this? I can just tell them to go to hoppercity.com, and it's right there, right? Okay.
A couple of thoughts that I had, um-
Is it there now?
Is it something that we, like, are those of us that have like social media accounts or things like that, can we start advertising that this survey is coming out? I mean, I just feel like we need to be talking about it a lot so that people are aware and they're watching for it, and I know we can post it on Hopper City community page, but even on our individual, if we have social media, I just think putting that on there so that people are aware and, because I know there's still gonna be people that are, gonna be people that just say they never saw it.
Think whatever you guys would like to do, we can facilitate that. We'll, we'll put it out on the Facebook page. We'll have our page. My assumption is we'll probably have Sherry doing newsletters for general city information, but it will include maybe verbiage for the resolution. It could include, hey, if you like your survey, let us know what you think, kind of a thing. So that's separate than this mailer, so you can fill up the two mailers. We'll put something just specifically separate on the Hopper City Facebook page, Facebook, Facebook page. And then, you know, if the people respond and they keep responding, we'll give that there.
So as far as the website that they've put together, is there a time that we can say, that'll give us all a chance to maybe look at that and pre, pre-read it and see if everything's ready?
You're probably gonna want to do that quickly.
Yeah.
You're gonna wanna have the survey up and then the website go, I mean, it's live, but it's, you know, hidden, right? So announce, we're gonna wanna announce the website and the survey probably all together in one thing. So if there are adjustments that need to be made, I would maybe get that together and get that to-
And I spent, spent about an hour with them today, looking at that plan, hopper weebly dot com, and talking about, they had dates in there that weren't gonna work, and talked about, like, they had, you know, we reorganized where the paragraphs were gonna fall. I mean, I didn't give them any of my own personal input that wasn't inappropriate, or, or, you know, personal bias, but-
I just wonder if where we've, where we've looked at this survey a little bit, and maybe just 'cause sometimes different supplies see different things, if maybe we could say, I don't know, Shauna, what you think, a good time would be like a day or two for us to just look at that so that you still have enough time, and then once we've all seen it and-
Yeah, it's really, it's up to you. So as soon as, you know, you wanna take the weekend, you know, or need to look at it, um, yeah. So it's just gonna be like, if you really wanna stick with, we either need to adjust some of their timing angles so it fits in here, or, you know, know that some of these things are gonna be quite bright. The website is extremely important, so I would prioritize that. And wanna look over that over the weekend, read all those things that maybe need to be changed. Maybe we can kinda consolidate that to one person on this committee. He's gonna get all those changes over the mat, and I'll update those. And if what's that updated, she can let me know, and then I can post that to the city website. I can post that to the Facebook page. We can do all those types of things, and then the survey will be on there.
And then at that point, we can also advertise it on our own.
Right.
Facebook page and say, here's the link, just so everything's, so if we do that.
Just, I mean, just a quick reminder, if you're still subject, anti-commission members and committee members, anything that constitutes support, even on your personal Facebook page, still subject to the general. So just be conscious of that.
Did you see the Salt Lake school board's problems they're having right now?
Yep.
They can access anything you write.
But yeah.
I don't even have one right now. I'm gonna open it for this, so.
The thing, so that thing is just link it to the original source. So if you, you know, follow Hopper City page, you can post it on there, share that directly over to me.
Just say, here, just be where this is coming out, here's the link, and then maybe shut off comments so that nothing else is said on it. I'm not open for discussion right now, just letting you know.
Don't shut up comments for, for a moment.
Don't shut them off? Okay. So that thing, Mary, that you have has different dates on it, would you mind just giving us the updated ones so that we have?
Uh, I will forward you the email that they just sent me this afternoon. Okay.
If it takes us an extra few days to adjust the timeline, this would be all right.
Right.
Well, that's-
I mean, there's something to consider. This is coming out right at election.
Yeah.
So are people going to be like, I don't wanna see it, I don't wanna, you know, you wanna give some people the reading room, or you don't want this to get lost in that chaos?
I think that's a good point.
I do too.
I don't know. We may wanna wait just until after. It's not that long.
I, I think it's not that long.
No, and I agree with Shauna.
One, you know, maybe even at like November, with open house, you know, that's-
That's the day after election.
The day after, people are gonna be crying in the streets.
That's right. I'm gonna be in my bumper.
It's a long half of those lines. I mean, I think everybody is pretty much in agreement with what Shauna's explaining, right? So I think so too.
I agree.
So when do we wanna send this survey out then? Do you wanna wait till after the elections?
Well, that's only a week difference, 'cause the twenty eighth, if you said that the twenty eighth, the next week's election.
You got Halloween, geez.
Maybe sending the survey is out, I just don't want it to get lost in a-
No, I think that's good. I do too. What if you send it out on the fourth instead?
Especially considering, most likely, what will be posted consistently on Facebook for the next week.
Is all gonna be election stuff.
Political, you know.
I, that's such a good point. I agree.
So we should, we should look to be sending out this initial survey on November fourth, the day after election?
Or the fifth.
For fifth?
Yeah.
Well, we send it out, it's gonna take a bit.
Yeah, I think we're okay to send it on the fourth, 'cause the election will be over, don't you think? Or do you think we should push it to the eleventh?
The open house or the survey?
The survey.
Just initially mailing the survey.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, like, I, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it's kinda like over here.
No, because then-
You can do it like on a Friday.
'Cause then the holidays and everything.
Yeah, like you can, you can push it out like on a Friday.
Let's go next year. Do we wanna send anything out in twenty twenty? I'm not sure.
Can we, how about November sixth then? Let's-
Yeah, like I can get everything ready, and everything's ready to go by November fifth, so I'll drop everything off at the post office on the 18th.
I can't take it, I know.
We'll get everything posted that morning. Might give us a little bit more time, too.
Yeah.
November fifth, that Thursday. And we can be ready to go by the fifth.
And then we'll just need to look at those other dates.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And put them in line, like, when we're gonna do the focus groups and stuff, 'cause that's gonna push everything. And we have holidays in there, so.
It'll push it off exactly like a week, I mean, a day or so, so, well.
So this, um, community engagement for the general plan was updated today. So the copies that Shauna gave you were probably not today's date. And that's a result of my talking with them, but I don't know what was changed, other than the timeline. 'Cause they were talking about, I told her, we try and get it out on the twenty eighth, so that would be survey number one available. Now we're gonna move that to the sixth. So just a few, and then focus groups meetings, she talked about needing them, having those scheduled somewhere the week of the seventeenth through the twentieth of November. Now we're gonna look back to the first of December after, after Thanksgiving, and then the first Zoom open houses, they were talking about December first, and we'll just move that back till the fifteenth or something. So we just need to move everything a little bit.
So the surveys will now be due that first week in December, like December second?
Well, I still, you know, December eighth, something like that.
Okay.
Have the surveys due, and then the open houses, I don't know, after that. They, they've also included a, and it's on the website, on, you know, how to, how to download Zoom and take care of it in case people want to participate. Because the first, on the open house number one, here's some of the details. It'll be held online through Zoom, and they're gonna, it'll be recorded and shared, an hour to an hour and a half in length. So each person that's participating will be at their own home, so it's not gonna be a group like we did before. It's just, people will get the link to wanna go and join the Zoom. And they're just gonna introduce what the project is, like, what's the general plan, and what it's not, and then ask, they, it looks like they've got an activity here, words and phrases. Spend sixty seconds jotting down words and phrases that come to mind when you think of Hopper City, and then circle your three favorites. And then they're gonna spend two minutes on what is great about Hopper, writing a description or sketching a picture of what makes Hopper City great. And then ask for three or four volunteers to share their, so it's gonna be like a, it's an interactive Zoom meeting, but they've got it laid out pretty well here.
And this is the focus group meetings, right?
This is the first open house.
Oh, that's the open house.
The Zoom open house.
Okay.
Um, then they want to, they're talking about, so in the next ten years, there'll be approximately five thousand more people in your city, projected growth to be fourteen thousand in twenty thirty.
But how many are gonna die during that time? Let's look at it.
Wasatch Front Region is growing. Hopper is projected to grow to fourteen thousand residents by twenty thirty. So in the next ten years, there'll be approximately five thousand more people in your city. That would mean a need for additional twenty-five hundred housing units. What do you want Hopper to look like, feel like, sound like in ten years? What matters most to you as you look towards the future? Small town feel?
Oh, my gosh.
Do we have to say that? Like, I don't want, I also feel like that's something we have to tell people.
That's why we try to keep this in-house here, not be shared by another group.
People are already depressed.
Right. And what I'm saying is, is-
Is that on the website?
This is their, in that community engagement for the general plan.
I think it's the stage still giving us the opening.
I don't know how to tell you to get to it. I'll find out.
I gave those numbers out during that one, that first meeting, wrong.
But I think it's the message.
Yeah, but is this, like, what they're planning on having be part of the open house, and, or is it on the website, like?
No, I think this is like our opening. Isn't this her, like, opening for the open house? Is that what they'll say?
Yeah, this is, this is, this is what's gonna, what they propose would happen in a Zoom meeting open house.
Yeah.
I feel like that's kind of saying, well, it doesn't matter what you do here. This is what's gonna happen. Like, I don't, I don't know. I just, I'm not a big fan of saying that necessarily. I mean, I'm not saying it won't happen.
Saying what?
That we're gonna have five thousand people here by whatever is projected. I don't know.
Five thousand more people?
Yeah. I don't know. I'm not trying to bury my head in the sand, but I think that that's not what people want to hear necessarily, and maybe-
Start by stating the outcome before we-
Kind of before, yeah, before we've come up with a plan. Unless, unless we're saying, this is what's projected. Is this what you want, or can we scale this back, or, I guess it depends on how you present it, but.
Okay.
That's not on the website, is it, though?
This is, this is- This is called the community engagement for the general plan. She emailed it to me late this afternoon, a revised version of what you got earlier in the week. And so, how about I just email it to everybody, and you can have a chance to look at it, and-
And now we have time.
And now you've got time. Okay?
Yeah, so I don't know, is this just for mini-members, you know, I don't know if it's posted on the website or not. I guess is it's most likely for just committee members?
I think it was just-
Just so you guys have an idea, like, what their strategy is.
Let me-
You know, this is for you to see, like, you know.
Updated community engagement.
Like you said, you know, the reality is that this is how many people may come to your cities without being-
Any one of them.
You know, so that's trying to remember that we, we don't have a lot of control over monitoring their housing requirements, so there is going to be some of this, it just, we'll need to tailor it to what you want that vision to be in line with the state regulation.
Okay.
Well, uh, the whole idea of this is to have this comprehensive study to, you know, one, our, our shore system right today may not support another five thousand people. We don't see that. Those are the very things that's bringing this study about, are the things that we need to focus on as part of our planning. And that's why I really am kind of uncomfortable when people just put numbers out there that they're, they're not, they don't know.
That's, that's-
They, they really don't know this. They make it sound like it's matter of fact, and like, they could say that way, right? For example, should grow over three thousand people over the next few years when they don't allow more than, is it fifteen or twenty-five?
A developer can only put in fifteen new homes per year.
Per year.
They can do multiple phases, but they can only do one phase per year, and that's, and they're limited. They only have so many more connections because they, they have no water. They're running out, so they have maybe about two hundred connections left, and they will be tapped out. And so, it, it just depends. Like, we're, we're trying to gather all this information, and I just think it's premature to say, and amongst us, I think it's okay, but if we're starting our open houses with that information, I just don't think that that's a fair representation of what actually is going to happen necessarily, depending on what information we get back.
I think that's gonna really make people feel like, then what's, what's the point? There, there really is, somebody's already planned it, it's already planned for us, and I, if we can just keep this just like we want it to be, and, and we really can do things. I mean, I don't think we're, I don't think we have to, I think we're being, oftentimes, I, I've, I've told people about this Friday morning session I have from nine to ten with the county, and it is the most discouraging meeting I could ever attend, because they're telling us how we're going to be here in Hopper. And I don't, I don't know. I don't think that sucks.
Well, and it just kinda, I don't know, to me, it just is a little bit defeating to feel like, well, we as a city, maybe a vision of this, but we have no local control over what the county or the state is saying. No, this is what you're gonna do. And I understand that we have to be accommodating to a point, but when it comes to what are resources we have and some of those things, just, it's just like my kids saying, well, why can't you just go to the bank and get more money? Why can't they just print more money? Well, doesn't, that would be nice, if you could do that.
For a while.
Yeah, but eventually, you can't. I mean, you just can't do that, so, I don't know.
Well, uh, it, it's always about moderate low income, and I'll just tell all of you this, you know, it, it's not working. I mean, who, who did drive the price of housing up so high? It's, it's not us sitting here. It's the price of land in Hopper hasn't gone to seventy-five thousand acre because of any of us here. It's, it's the very people who's saying, you know, we, we're going to have five thousand or ten thousand people in nineteen forty, the people that are saying, they're the ones that's driving the prices up. I don't think that's, it's not representative. Well, it's representative of the group, because that's how they, that they're promoting their own, their own agenda. Not, not that this means anything. Well, it does kinda mean something. So an experience I've had in the last week is have a group of people, McCollum said, it started out with just a simple question. Can we get twenty bushel of tomatoes? Yes, you can. Well, okay, but we, I know you're telling us we can, but if we actually show out there, show up out there, can we really pick twenty bushel of tomatoes? Well, yeah, there are twenty bushel of tomatoes, the celebrity tomatoes. But we've been to other places and once we got there, they really didn't have twenty bushel. I finally got convinced, yes, there are twenty bushel of celebrity tomatoes. Well, what about Roman tomatoes? It was just like that with everything. Roman tomatoes, celebrity tomatoes. 'Cause that brought me to one of the questions in here, you know. Can we really, do we really have, there are other resources that are important to us too, besides just homes. And maybe it's food. And anyway, so it was surprising to me that I was so questioned that could I really, could they really come pick that many? And so they did come pick many times over that many and they're back again. They showed up again this time. But, you know, to me, that was just kind of an indication that it's just not that easy to go out and think that if it, and, you know, they were, they're an F L D S group, is who they are. And they, they send a lot of people out, a lot of, and it was just surprising that it's just so limited, that they just couldn't go hardly anywhere. I don't know if that means anything.
No, it seems like.
Kind of does to me, because I think sometimes, you know, this, this country was, was built on three principles. All had, and not one of them are addressed anymore today. And number one was food. Because we'll always need it. Housing was never one of the three. Never, I mean, I always figured people could have it. I realize it's been a couple hundred years ago, but it always come a place to live, no matter how meager that is. But sometimes food and other things we are a little hard to combine. But that's a real, true experience as far as what took place here in Hopper. And now they finally realized, you know, well, no wonder you'd have, you know, Hopper's famous for their tomatoes. Well, they didn't know that when they first got here.
Okay. Well, I think, I think we've refined this questionnaire to the point where I think it's gonna be a good one.
I do too.
Will Shawna and I work together and see what we can do about putting up, do you want me to type this up with all my notes and send it over to you?
Yeah, you can. I'll send it over. Yeah, that's what I get. And then I don't know, do you guys wanna, oh, yeah, the website? And we can just set a deadline for Monday.
I think that's.
On like, I don't know about you, Mary, but like Monday we'll have this typed up. We'll have suggestions for the website delineated. And you need to get over to Wasatch Front Regional Council. And then, you know, updates to the timeline to let them know. And then give that to them to update everything.
Soon as I get to Wi-Fi, I will send you this updated community engagement.
Do you guys think that as far as the, you know, once the survey goes out and as far as having those focus groups, because of the timing of the survey now, that it would be beneficial to move that past the holidays and maybe have our focus groups start in January? Do you think people are gonna be too busy with everything going on with the holidays and?
I think if you, I don't think so. I think if you got it right in the middle of them both, I don't know that you'd have too much issue.
We just want them to meet one time between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
And the website, let's say, did its best from Monday through February or whatever.
I think if we ran it into like that Thanksgiving weekend or.
Are you looking at planhopper, planhopper weebly dot com?
And you go to like join a focus group, you pick first day, it'll be the best.
Okay.
Nice.
Okay. All right. Anything else we need to discuss?
Good meeting.
Are we good?
Thanks, everybody, for all of your hard work and willingness to hash these things out. Eventually, we're gonna get up and running and I think it'll go well, but.
Well, it is up and running now.
I know, it's up, I know it's up and running, but I feel like we're just stuck in the mire for a bit until we can actually.
Can you help me it up?
Be a headway. Thank you.